Welcome to the Board of Education meeting today, Monday, February 13, 2023. Please join us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Just as a reminder, or first time hearing this, there are exits at the rear of the auditorium, as well as two exits at each side of the stage, as well as behind the stage. If there's an emergency, please use the exit closest to you and leave the building. I am going to announce the dais, starting all the way to my left. We have trustee Tasneen Medji, we have trustee Len Hirsch, we have trustee David Keefe, board vice president Bob Valerino, on board president Mark Hamburg. To my right is superintendent schools, Dr. Daniel Gaetley. We have our deputy superintendent schools, Ms. Diane Castangway. We have our assistant superintendent of curriculum and personnel, Mr. Ed Chemnitzer. We have, oh, I'm so used to seeing John there. Hello, Olivia, our district's council Olivia with partner John Sheehan on the screen behind us. And then our district clerk Christina Cortez, so welcome. We're going to get started right away, and we will move to the student report. Yes, I see you back there. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sophia Ing. To begin the report, the Wheatley and Willetts Stage and Jazz Bands concert was on February 7. In the second week of February, we had OLE, or Orchestra of Long Island workshops. These musical workshops help students in both the orchestra and band improve their skills. The OLE concert will be tomorrow, February 14, and Wheatley students will be performing with professional musicians. February 9 was the STEAM Fair, where various clubs operated fun booths and stands, creating an engaging and fun atmosphere for families to enjoy. There have been two prominent Valentine's Day oriented sales. The Trium Music Honor Society had their annual flower sale, where flowers were delivered to a person of the buyer's choice. Meanwhile, today, the class of 2026 officers sold candy grams, which are pouches of goodies that work similarly to the Trium flower sale, and baked goods. Tomorrow, the Student Senate will be holding a Wear Pink theme day. Not only is Wheatley getting into the Valentine's Day spirit, we are also preparing for showdown. On January 23, a showdown preparation meeting was held. At this meeting, a layout of the showdown events was outlined. Theme days, sports games, activities, and an assembly was planned. The officers of each team are working with each other and their class to plan banners, mascots, and designs for their showdown teams. Showdown will be from March 13 to March 17. That concludes the student report. Thank you.
Thank you. So John, maybe you should mute until we need you. Okay, that brings us to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Thank you, Sophia. I think we should talk before your report, because we share so many of the same things. Okay, so thank you, everybody. Just a little strategic plan update. On Thursday, February 9, the postcards for the strategic plan were mailed to all homes in the community. You should have started receiving them. If not, certainly by today or tomorrow, they should hit your mailboxes. That will give an opportunity for all members of our community, including those who do not have students enrolled in our schools, to participate and provide feedback. The committee meeting, the next committee meeting, which we will communicate to those members, will be March 1, and the community forum for all members of our community to participate will be March 9. So keep adding your thoughts and reading the other thoughts in the meantime. Thank you for your continued input. Just a timeline, it is the most wonderful time of the year for the budget season coming up. Our first budget work session will be Wednesday, March 1. At that budget work session, we will be hearing the recommended budget overview, as well as the administrative program and capital components, and a presentation from Dr. Lynn Maza on the PPS department. The second budget work session will be Wednesday, March 8, where we will hear about the fund balance. We will hear from our ENL department, Ms. Faith Tripp, from our athletics department, Mr. Mike Scotoro, and from our technology and innovation department, from Ms. Stacy Weinberg. Our budget work session number three, Wednesday, March 15. We will hear from our building principals, Jim Bloomgarden, Christine Dragone, and Joe Weiner. Budget work session number four, Wednesday, March 20, will be a budget overview and committee presentations, and then it is anticipated that the board will adopt the budget on Wednesday, March 29. All budget meetings will take place in room 450, and we hope that you will join us there. Okay, just a couple of updates on some wonderful goings on recently. Last week, Dr. Lynn Maza hosted a life skills consortium meeting here at the Wheatley School. We are very proud of our membership and our participation in this committee. Over 20 districts came to join our meeting. Some of our own teachers shared a bit about our program. Ms. Di Albenzio, Ms. Picorillo, Ms. Stein, Dr. Larrino, Mr. Langus were there. They did a presentation highlighting some of the impressive work here in our own building. So thank you, Dr. Maza, for hosting and for allowing our school district to be a model for so many others. On the same note, Ms. Stein, who we just mentioned, has asked the Wheatley School to host a special ed camp, which we will be hosting on April 22, here from 7:30 to noon. We invite all students, parents, teachers from any district here on Long Island to join us for a day of teacher-led learning with a focus on special education and how we can take those initiatives that we learn for most special students and use them in our classrooms to help all learners. So anybody who would like interest to register for that event can find that information in my update, and you can see that on our social media accounts as well. Mr. O'Brien hosted a post-secondary planning meeting this week, last week, with the United States Navy. As a interest for those who have any interest in joining the United States military, Petty Officer Valentin was here. If you missed that event, it will be posted soon on the Guidance YouTube channel. There was some wonderful information shared about so many of the opportunities in the Navy and all the branches of the military. For those of you who were here for the STEAM Fair, which were so many of our students, I think every one of our students from the Northside School and so many from the Willetts Road School were here. We are already looking forward to next year. I won't give away any of the ideas, but I know they are throwing out some really, really exciting themes for next year, and we're already looking forward to it. So thank you, Ms. Weinberg, and her whole team for all the work there. So many athletic highlights. Our students have been busy on and off the fields and the courts. Congratulations to Zach Samuel, Nassau County wrestling champ at 110 pounds, and J.J. Manzano, who finished a true second place and earned a spot in the state championship in Albany. Congratulations to Jojo Dolizal, who won the Nassau County bowling championship and will compete in the state championships in Syracuse. Congratulations to our Nassau County indoor track and field championships, JT Exeros and Thomas Lee, Chris O'Connor, Lucian Fazillo, county champ, four-by-four-hundred relay. And of course, our varsity boys' basketball finished their regular season with a record 19-1. They were the crowned conference B1 champions and will be the number-one seed heading into the playoffs. So Mr. Scotoro has a lot of traveling in upstate New York coming up, and I know that he will be there to cheer on all of our athletes. And we look forward to seeing all of these students next month at our board meeting to honor all of their accomplishments. Speaking of honoring accomplishments at next month's board meeting, today we were just notified that Om Patel and Rea Mattel are national merit finalists. So because we were just notified today, they weren't quite able to squeeze us into their schedule, but we look forward to bringing them here next month and honoring them there. I'd like to ask Mr. Chemnitzer to give us a quick review of the February work session.
Thank you, Dr. Gaetley. At the Board of Education work session on February 1, Dr. Lynn Maza, Director of People Personnel Services, and a team of seven teachers, led an outstanding presentation on our co-teaching program in the district. The presentation not only reviewed the many reasons why we love co-teaching and we see value in it, but we also heard from students in videos in all three buildings, sharing the reasons why they enjoy having two teachers, the reasons why they feel safe and they feel confident inside that classroom, and really just their overall joy in coming to work, based on the relationships that they've developed with their teachers and the students in those classes. What's been amazing about our co-teaching program, and we certainly highlighted during that presentation, is that students shared that having the support of two teachers to both support them but also to enrich them has benefited both general education students as well as students with disabilities. This year, our district added co-teaching to science and social studies classes at the Wheatley School. That has seen amazing success since September. We look to actually enhance that next year by adding more sections. We want to thank our amazing teachers, who shared in the presentation and helped Dr. Lynn Maza present it at the session, Northside's Emily Ramos and Ashley Valenti, Willetts Road's Kimberly Lynch, Claire Messina and Kimberly Troyano, and the Wheatley Schools' Katerina Fox and Justin Portente. And as always, we thank Dr. Maza for your leadership of the department, of our students, and it's certainly showing in the success that we see every day. We want to thank our parent council, our Special Education Parent Council, for their ongoing support. And the presentation is on our district website, underneath the Board of Education tab, under the Presentations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chemnitzer, and I will share that presentation out this week in my update. Just some upcoming events before I wrap this up. Tomorrow, as Sophia shared, is the Orchestra of Long Island concert, so bring a date. Seems like a good night for that. Our Italy and France trips are leaving this week. We're very excited to be back out in the world, literally. You can follow them on all our social media accounts, hashtag WheatleyAbroad. This week, Thursday, the Willetts Road Concert, the sixth and seventh grade chorus and orchestra. On February 23, at 7:30, the Nassau County Police Department, the Third Precinct, has invited us, members of the Third Precinct, to join them at the community forum. Anybody may attend. I will put the details in my update, but that will be taking place at One Law Enforcement Way in Garden City, and that's again at 7:30 that evening. That is during February break, which I know we are all looking forward to. I wish everybody a safe few days and some wonderful time with their family. I mentioned the budget dates. I will share them again in my update. On March 7, we look forward to the Winter Sports Awards. As you heard, we have lots to celebrate. And on March 17, we look forward to Books Alive at the Northside School. And that concludes my report.
That's fantastic, and I think the board is always amazed at how much information can be presented in just the short window between the last meeting and this one. And that's why we so appreciate these updates, both not only the updates in regards to our student celebrations, but really across district-wide, staff, community, and all. And we so appreciate you summarizing that and sharing again through your superintendent updates, so thank you for that. As far as the board report, I did, the board just did receive its postcard in the mail from many members, as did the whole community, and we just want to reiterate and say thank you for that, because that initiative to send out the postcard came through various questions and comments in the discussion to make sure that our entire community, not just our parent community, does participate in the strategic plan planning. It's such an important part of the process of what goes on. It's the base, the strategic plan is the base of how we move forward on so many initiatives and budget planning. So we do ask, and I just want to reiterate, the superintendent's comments and requests that our entire community do participate in the process, and we hope that this postcard and reminder to all makes sure that that message does get out. As far as board committee updates, that's the one thing I think that did not take place since the last board meeting was any committees. So we have no board committee updates at this time. The board does have an update, though, in regards to negotiations, and we'd like to read a statement in regards to our clerical negotiations. And I am pleased to announce that the district and the clerical unit have come to an agreement regarding the terms of a new collective bargaining agreement in effect from July 1, 2022, through June 30, 2027. The agreement includes a cost of living increase for unit members and a health insurance give-back to help offset the district's rising cost of health insurance. We want to congratulate the administration, the unit, and the unit president on conducting productive and good-fait negotiation sessions regarding the new agreement. And it's expected that the board will move on that, and we'll lay tonight in the resolution items. Let's see, oh, academic calendar. So as shared at the last meeting, as shared in the various emails that go out, it's expected that the board is going to move on a calendar for the '23-'24 school year. The superintendent has shared with the board her recommendation and the administration's recommendation, and that's going to be option number one, and it's my belief that the board will move in support of that. Just a couple of overall comments for the community, because we did receive a handful of comments asking for feedback, as we always do when it comes to calendar implementation. So one of the main drivers that we look at as, excuse me, as our administration looks at and then shares back with the board as we look at, is our emergency days. And one of the biggest things is if we adopted version two or three, and if we found ourselves in additional emergency days, more than four, we would need to pull that day back from vacation, as we've posted in district calendars in years past. Option one gives us an additional day that would hopefully prevent the need to pull back from our vacation days, which is so well-needed. Historically, this district has opened up for the past number of years before Labor Day, and option number one is a Labor Day preopening. There's a number of reasons that we do do that, in addition to supporting our administrators and our teachers of getting the school year started, so that our students can come back, celebrate their summer, and talk about their summer in the classroom, and then certainly after the Labor Day weekend, start the school year running. The next biggest thing we just want to point out is the commitment that this district has made to celebrate all holidays across all the board, and as a result of including all those holidays that are in our calendar, we have to extend our days that we have available to pull from, and that's just another reason that puts us before the Labor Day start. And those are really the main things that we want to share. And as I said, it is up for resolution tonight, and I do expect the board to move on version number one. So with that, I'm going to move into the information items, which are all policy reads this evening. We're going to start with policy 6830.1, which is a third read this evening on credit cards. I'm going to first turn to the board, 6830.1, credit cards. Is there any comments from the board?
I think everything was addressed from the last read in this one.
And we thank council for addressing the board's comments accordingly. Any other comments from the board? Seeing no comments from the board, I'm going to turn to the public. Any comments in regards to 6830.1, credit cards? Seeing no comments, I'm going to move off of the third read on that. I'm going to move to a second read on 6830.1-r, which is a read to rescind. Regulations a read to rescind. Any comments from the board? Seeing no comments from the board, I'm going to turn to the public. Any comments from the public? Seeing no comments from the public, I'm going to move off of the second read. Thank you. I'm going to move into the first read on policy 4526, computer use in instruction. Any comments from the board? Seeing and hearing no comments from the board, I'm going to turn to the public. Any comments from the public, 4526, computer use in instruction? Now, seeing no comments from the public, I'm going to move off the first read of 4526. Now, seeing no comments from the public, I'm going to move off the first read of 4526. I'm going to move into the first read of 5420 dash R. Comments from the board?
I just want to, I believe this is one of the policies that we have to implement through a new, a change in New York State law, and then we're going to have to update our policy accordingly. Is that correct, Olivia?
Yes, that's correct.
So, this is a law that I believe the board was shared. It goes back to 2019, and which, and as Mr. Fellerino just said, we will be aligning our policy to form law. Thank you for that. Any other questions from the board? Seeing no questions from the board, I'm going to turn to the public. Seeing no questions from the public, I'm going to move off of the first read of 5420 dot R, and I'm going to move to the first read of 5300 dot 30, prohibited conduct. Any questions, comments from the board?
And Dr. Gaetley, this is just to add a couple of items that have been used into, I think, notice to be being used in the school, and we want to address those accordingly.
Correct, it's one item in particular.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the public, 5300 dot 30, prohibited conduct? And as we always ask, you just identify yourself by name.
Alina Yuzilov, pleasure to be here. I am just wondering, is this a new policy, or is this a revision to the old one? I just got to see it.
It is not a new policy. It's part of the overall code of conduct policy, and this is just a revision, adding a clause to allow administration to address certain disciplines in regards to a new scanning device, product that came up to be detrimental to the school district.
A new what?
A new product that came up to be found to be detrimental to the school district.
A product?
It's a scanning device. You hear police departments talk about it all the time. It's a scan, it's a card reader that could be, be used to pull information.
So, the part about obscene, profane, defamatory, and verbally abusive language, or gestures?
Everything has been existing in the policy. Nothing is new, other than...
So, that's not new?
Nope. The only language that's new is, I will read it. DD. It's section DD, using and/or possessing any radio frequency identification, also known as an RFID device, jamming, scanning, copying, and/or cloning devices, including but not limited to the Flipper Zero.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions from the public? Seeing no questions, I'm going to move to the first read on 5300 dot 70 dash R. Public conduct on school property regu, regulations for public conduct on school property. Any comments from the board?
And that's just a regulation that follows what we just spoke about.
For the same device. Any other questions from the public, excuse me, from the board? I'm going to turn to the public. Any questions from the public, 5300 dot 70 dash R? Also, that's the only revision to the policy, existing regulation. Okay, thank you. Seeing no questions or comments, I'm going to move on to the next one, which is 9520 dot two dash R, family and medical leave regulation. Any questions, comments from the board? Seeing no questions and comments from the board, I'm going to turn to the public. Any questions or comments from the public? No, thank you. So, I'm just going to ask, this is also a change in statute, and there's no change in the policy, but just to abide and follow the laws, either statute and/or laws of New York State.
Well, there is a change in the policy.
Excuse me?
To update.
To update, to include the statute, thank you. So, I'm just going to suggest that administration take a look at our overall policy in regards to policy reads, and in cases of change to statute and/or law, that we consider allowing these to be adopted the first evening of the first read. We do allow it for now, but a consistency that we can have a consistency across all boards, which we will be doing this evening on this particular policy.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to, since I don't see any other comments, I'm going to move into 5152, admission of non-resident students. Any questions or comments from the board?
I think everything's been addressed that we brought up the last couple of meetings.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing no further questions or comments from the board, I'm going to turn to the public. 5152, admission of non-resident students. First read. Seeing no questions or comments from the public, I'm going to move off the first read. We thank you for your patience this evening. This brings us to open time. Yuzilov, you want to come on up?
Um, I'll wait.
Sure? Okay. Because open time, I'll just remind, is really for agenda items, and the second open time is for any topics. So, you want to wait? Sure, no problem. All right, so with that, I am going to move into section three, the tenure appointment. So, I am going to ask for a second on item number 3.1. May I have a second? Mr. Keefe, discussion, superintendent?
I would like to invite up Mr. Weiner. And Ms. Tripp.
Good evening, everyone. It is with great pleasure that we recommend Tara Dennington for tenure within the East Williston School District. Ms. Dennington joined our team as an English as a New Language teacher in January of 2019, where she split her time between Willetts Road and the Wheatly School. The relationships that she forged with the students at Willetts have been nurtured as they have made their way up to the Wheatly School. Here is what one of Ms. Dennington's students, Brigitte, had to say about Ms. Dennington. "Ms. Dennington is a great teacher that helps me a lot. I like when she helps me with homework and tests. She is a great person." Another student shared, "Ms. Dennington is my favorite teacher because she helps me with many things that I don't understand at school, such as homework, tests, some articles, and other things." Another student captured how we all feel about Ms. Dennington when he stated that "Ms. Dennington is a very kind and funny person." Students and colleagues alike love and appreciate Ms. Dennington. Gail Liebert, fellow ENL teacher who is also here tonight to support, shared, "Tara is flexible, always willing to take on new challenges and learn new curriculum to help our students. It is clear that Tara cares deeply about her students, as evidenced by her careful planning, intentional use of SEL lessons, and communication with colleagues. Tara is also a creative and talented crocheter. So, if you stop by room 108B, you can see some cute crochet animals."
Can you give us that remember again?
108B. Another colleague, Jason Craven, also here tonight, shared that Tara is full of creative ideas and serves as a wealth of knowledge for her colleagues. She has high expectations for all of her students, and she researches techniques and strategies to meet their individual needs. Tara has taken over the day of service, and it continues to evolve under her direction. Finally, Michael Langas shared, also with us this evening, "Co-teaching with Tara has been incredible. Tara's knowledge of content and of her students is inspiring. Together, we develop creative and engaging lessons for students of all abilities. Tara looks forward to seeing, um, excuse me, students look forward to seeing the new ideas that Tara brings to the classroom. Tara always puts the students first in everything that she does. And in our short time at Wheatly, Mr. Weiner and I have both witnessed the many ways that Ms. Dennington contributes positively to the culture of East Williston. She is extremely collaborative, always has a smile on her face, and she shared with me that her favorite thing about working in East Williston is the people, both her wonderful colleagues and her fantastic students. The gratitude that is felt by each person she encounters on a daily basis here inspires her. East Williston has helped Ms. Dennington to find her voice and to blossom as an educator. And looking to the future, Ms. Dennington shared that she is excited to continue to develop and nurture relationships with her students, her colleagues, and the East Williston community." And with that, I'm going to invite Mr. Weiner up to tell us a little more.
Thanks, Pete. So, in addition to all the wonderful instruction, activities, and collaboration in Ms. Dennington's classroom that Faith just spoke about, her influence goes beyond the classroom as well. She impacts all of the Wheatly School and the East Williston School District. Tara's a member of the Wheatly DASSA Committee, which works to provide a safe and supportive environment for all of our students. She is a member of the PDSG Committee, which supports professional learning for our faculty. She has led teacher-centered courses, which are professional learning opportunities for our teachers, on such topics as social and emotional learning, cultural competence, and translation in the classroom. She also facilitated an activity at the STEAM Fair last week for our elementary and middle school students. And perhaps the greatest example of her impact on the school-wide community is the work she did this year to coordinate the day of service and learning. For those of you who don't know, this is a day at Wheatly where we pause the regular routine, and students choose to participate in myriad service opportunities, both at the Wheatly School and off-site. This day involves coordinating the activities themselves, creating a sign-up system for students, getting supplies for the activities, coordinating PTO and other community organization contributions and volunteers, transportation to off-site locations, collecting permission slips, identifying chaperones, and faculty coordinators, clearly communicating about the details of the day, and keeping everything organized. It's a giant undertaking, involving over 600 students, well over 100 adults, and endless visits from the Amazon delivery driver who drops off the supplies in the days before. And that's, I just want to tell a quick story about that. We store those deliveries in the art gallery right across the way. And as we got closer and closer to the day of service, those boxes started stacking up, literally floor to ceiling. And I remember walking by the art gallery the day before the day of service, thinking, "I don't know what they're going to do with that stuff tomorrow," because, again, there are many activities, onsite, offsite, stuff is going here, there, and everywhere. I was walking out of the building, then I went home, and I came back the next morning, and everything was unpacked, sorted, labeled, boxed, taped, organized, ready to go. Tara and her co-facilitator, Michael, really spent almost the whole night pulling those boxes apart, putting them in order, so that as soon as the kids walked into the building and were ready for their service opportunities, everything was ready for them. And that, to me, demonstrates all the wonderful qualities that we've shared about Tara tonight. Her dedication to her students and our community, her organization, her collaboration, her commitment to seeing something through to the end. Those are all examples of what makes Tara an asset both to the Wheatly School and to the East Williston, East Williston School District. I thank the members of the Board of Education and district administration for the opportunity to speak on Ms. Dennington's behalf. Faith and I enthusiastically support the recommendation for her to be granted tenure this evening.
Thank you both. So, we were here that night when that cart was going back and forth, and that unloading, and looking at that room, and there was no way. We thought that was going to be done by morning, so that in itself, congrats. So, Ms. Dennington, it's my belief that this motion will pass this evening. If it does, we certainly want to make sure that you come back in April for the ten-year appointment night, which is full of people and is really just a fun, exciting night. But we certainly don't want tonight to go unnoticed and say, "Congrats." And it's so fun to be surrounded by family and friends and colleagues, and it's really the best part, is just to look out at you as this is all being read and to really celebrate. We hear so much throughout the school year about all our staff and student accomplishments, but really, this is a moment to just take a moment to celebrate you and what you've done. So, we congratulate you with that. So, with that, I am going to call for the vote. And any other discussion before I do? Seeing and hearing no further discussion, call for the vote. All in favor? Item passes 5-0. Congratulations. Okay, I'm going to move into the action items. I'm going to take a couple by themselves. Action item number 4.1, may I have a second? Mr. Keefe, discussion? Seeing and hearing no discussion, call for the vote. All in favor? Item passes 5-0. Thank you. 4.2 by itself, may I have a second? Mr. Keefe, discussion? Seeing and hearing no discussion, call for the vote. All in favor? Item passes 5-0. Thank you. 4.3 by itself, may I have a second? Mr. Hirsch, discussion? Seeing and hearing no discussion, call for the vote. All in favor? Item passes 5-0. Thank you. 4.4 by itself, may I have a second? Mr. Fellerino, discussion? Seeing and hearing no discussion, call for the vote. All in favor? Item passes 5-0. Thank you. 4.5 by itself, may I have a second? Mr. Keefe, discussion? Seeing and hearing no discussion, call for the vote. All in favor? Item passes 5-0. Thank you. Recommendation on 4.6 by itself, I'm just going to make sure the language is clear. Christina, recommendation to accept the East Williston Union Free School District, School District Calendar, known as version one?
Option one.
Option one, excuse me, option one, for the 23-24 school year. So, I'm amending that accordingly. Recommendation to accept the East Williston Union Free School District Calendar, known as option one, for the 23-24 school year. May I have a second? Mr. Keefe, any other discussion? Seeing and hearing no discussion, call for the vote. All in favor? Item passes 5-0. Thank you. I'm going to take 4.7 by itself. May I have a second? Mr. Fellerino, discussion? Seeing and hearing no discussion, call for the vote. All in favor? Item passes 5-0. Thank you. I'm going to take 4.8 by itself. May I have a second? Mr. Keefe, discussion? Seeing and hearing no discussion, call for the vote. All in favor? Item passes 5-0. Thank you. I am going to take 4.9 by itself. May I have a second? Mr. Fellerino, discussion? Seeing and hearing no discussion, call for the vote. All in favor? Item passes 5-0. Thank you. I'm grouping 4.10 through 4.12 together, 410 to 412. May I have a second? Mr. Hirsch, discussion? Seeing and hearing no discussion, call for the vote. All in favor? Items pass 5-0. Thank you. Taking 4.13 by itself. May I have a second? Mr. Keefe, discussion? Seeing and hearing no discussion, call for the vote. All in favor? Item passes 5-0. Thank you. I'm going to take 4.14 by itself. May I have a second? Mr. Keefe, discussion? These rates, Ms. Castanway, can you please confirm for the public how these rates are established?
The state sets these rates.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion on 4.14? Seeing and hearing no discussion, call for the vote. All in favor? Item passes 5-0. Thank you. I'm going to take 4.15 by itself. May I have a second? Mr. Fellerino, discussion? Seeing and hearing no discussion, call for the vote. All in favor? Item passes 5-0. Thank you very much. I'm going to group items 4.16 to 4.20 together. May I have a second? Ms. Megge, discussion? Seeing and hearing no discussion, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor? Items pass 5-0. Thank you. I'm going to group items 4.21 to 4.23 together, 4.21 to 4.23. May I have a second? Mr. Keefe, discussion?
Ms. Castanway, could you just go over 4.23 a little bit for us?
Sure.
The budget transfer for...
The budget transfer for services?
Yes. So that is moving money from tuition for a special ed student to outside services for a special ed student due to a change in what was determined to be needed by the student.
Change in placement?
So this, we did, yes. So we did a significant transfer last month. This should cover us for the remainder of the year.
Thank you. Any other discussion, 4.21 to 4.23? Seeing no further discussion, call for the vote, all in favor? Items pass five zero, thank you. I have a walk-on, I'm going to number this one, walk-on item number 4.27, I will read it. Contract for Donald J. Larson, recommendation to approve a contract with Donald J. Larson, musician for drummer services for the Wheatley School musical for the period of February 14-23 through April 5, 2023, the rate specified in the contract. I'm now going to group items 4.24 to 4.27 together, 4.24 to 4.27 together, may I have a second? Mr. Fallarino, discussion? Seeing and hearing, no discussion, call for the vote, all in favor? Items pass five zero, thank you. I'm going to group items 5.1 to 5.3 together, may I have a second? Ms. Megge, discussion? Seeing and hearing, no discussion, call for the vote, all in favor? Items pass five zero, thank you. 6.1 by itself, may I have a second? Mr. Keefe, discussion? Seeing and hearing, no discussion, I'm going to call for the vote, all in favor? Item passes five zero, thank you. Grouping 7.1 to 7.7 together. May I have a second? Fallarino, discussion? Seeing and hearing, no discussion, call for the vote, all in favor? Item passes five zero, items pass five zero, thank you. With that, it moves us into the next open time. I don't need to slip to the second open time, it's okay, Christina, thank you. So, Michael.
Good evening, Mike Goyelmo. I was just curious, do you know what the surplus, I would imagine you know what the surplus number is for, for the, for the, for the last year?
Yes.
Can you share that?
Yes. It's, it's going to be around a million, 1.2 million.
1.2 million.
We have over, we have 98 to 98.5% spend, spend this year.
98, that's, that's more than some recent years, certainly. So, so 1.2?
Approximately.
I know, you're not quite done yet, but I'm not going to hold you to it, but just roundabout, thank you so much.
Yes.
So, no, I was just going to share, which we've shared in the past, there were a couple of major drivers which are driving the spend this year. One is transportation.
What did that cost? It was, it was in the hundreds of thousands, right?
Millions.
It was in...
But the change...
The, 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 the overage is what I'm talking about.
About half a million, at 500,000.
Wow, that's a lot of money.
It is, it is. And then the second unexpected change was in regards to our health insurance rates.
And what was that?
That was 12% for the second year in a row.
And we were expecting what percentage?
Eight.
Eight. So to go from four, I'm sorry, to go from eight to 12%, that, that four percentage points, what does that equate to in, in thousands of dollars?
That's about $300,000.
300,000. And Mark, if you could just refresh my memory, the transportation for a half a million dollars, what, what was the rationale for that? That wasn't us, I know that, but I don't remember the details.
So I'm actually going to ask Attorney John Sheen to comment on that. We have to, is he unmuted? Yes, you're unmuted. So, John, if you could comment on that, and what happened with transportation and why the additional expense?
My pleasure. So, for the school district, without a bid, for a contract, a multi-year contract, it had a multi-year contract awarded. The transportation provider claimed that this is only a year-to-year contract, and the district went out again to bid for the year-to-year contract, and only received one bidder. So the district did attempt to procure other bids and interest other transportation providers during the bid process. Fortunately, only one bidder responded to the bid, and in order to provide the district with timely transportation, the contract was entered into by the district, and resulted in a substantial increase in the district's transportation cost. That transportation cost has been seen throughout all of the school districts on Long Island, resulting from the pandemic. The, the impact of the pandemic caused the number of, most significantly, the number of drivers, school bus drivers that are involved in transportation. This is something that the district has been seeing, that has been seen throughout the school districts on Long Island, an increase in their transportation costs, and that is a direct relationship to the increase in both fuel costs and the difficulty of getting bus drivers.
Thank you, Mr. Sheen.
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other one, anyone else? No? Alina? You good?
This is Annie Top. So I was here at last meeting, and unfortunately, I left early to tend to my children, but as I watched the video of the continuation of the meeting, I was concerned as what I, as to what I heard, and so I am here with the concern that what I say may have potential consequences on my children who are enrolled in the school district. Nevertheless, my presence here is driven by the concern for the best interest of not only my children, but all the students within the district. Specifically, I come forward to address what I believe was the lack of transparency regarding a question asked by our district resident, Mike, during the last meeting about equity. During that meeting, Mike phrased a two-part question, and the second part of the question was whether the district ever hired an equity coach. And to me, the response provided was insufficient. As a member of the Cultural Initiatives Committee last year, I was involved in the numerous interviews, three-part interviews of various consultants, one of whom was John Crownapple of Dignity Consulting. His website clearly states that he co-authored a book on successful equity implementation. His book is called Belonging Through a Culture of Dignity: Successful Equity Implementation. In addition, I emphasize that his website is replete with references to equity and related topics. Why does equity concern me as a former immigrant, I mean, as an immigrant from former Soviet Union? Equity to me is not equality. Equity is equal outcomes, no matter what you do, how hard you work, whether you sit on the couch, or whether you work your butt off, excuse my language. Equity means equal outcomes. And I lately hear this word a lot, and it concerned me, I know that we did not hire, as per last spring's interviews, we did not hire an equity consultant. I believe we were not transparent in answering Mike's question, whether we tried or not. So we did, because one of these interviewees was an equity consultant. Now, number two, then I go on to listen to another consultant during last month's meeting, another consultant that we're hiring. I wish I was present at last meeting. His name is Thomas Murray, and another resident of our school district, Susan, asked the question, why are we hiring him? So I just went to his website, and I started looking him up, and was very, very concerned to see his blog, and his blog is Equity is Education. And he goes on to say how everything we do for children and do for staff all must begin with an equity lens. And yet, we hired this consultant and voted five zero, as per last meeting, right when one of the residents was asking whether we're hiring a cons, an equity consultant. So now, you guys answered him that, you know, he's going to be mentoring our teachers in how to coach and mentor our teachers. But what exactly is this person who equity is all over his blog, is going to be mentoring our teachers in? I would love to see that curriculum, I'd love to see his presentations, and I'm very, very concerned.
So, I'm going to let the superintendent address, just as we did the last time, in regards to what that particular individual was brought here to do from a professional standpoint, but since you thought the answer wasn't clear the first time, I'm going to make it clear for you right now, we do not hire equity consultants. The work that you're referring to last year in that committee, that was not brought forward, there were several consultants that were interviewed by the committee at that time, none of which were brought forward, none of which this district chose to move forward. In fact, that committee came to a close. We do not hire equity consultants. We do, though, hire people to work from a professional standpoint in this district. So with that said, I just want to make sure that answer is clear. We do not hire equity consultants. With that said, I'll let the superintendent answer what Tom Murray did specifically for us.
Tom Murray, most recently, the contract that was approved was for mentor training for our veteran staff who do mentor work with teachers. As Mr. Kamberg said, the focus of that was not equity work, it was in working with teachers and how to give them training to be better mentors towards our newer staff.
Why was this particular consultant chosen, and who chose him?
We worked as a team, we worked with our administrators and with our E W T A leadership. When we found Tom Murray, he's an author, he's a natural, he worked with many school districts on Long Island.
We were collaborating together with the Cultural Initiatives Committee to bring in a consultant? Why did we go around that committee and hire him on our own?
This was separate work. This had nothing to do with the work of the Cultural Initiative.
Okay, and so then, my question for you would be, yes, you may not have hired an equity consultant last year, but the, the answer to one of the residents should have been more transparent, that we tried to interview.
Yeah, Alina, I apologize, I don't know exactly what his question was at that point, but I certainly believe that if Mr. G felt that he did not get the answer he needed, he wouldn't be shy to ask it again. Although I do appreciate your asking your own individual questions in regards to topic. Right now, I'm just, as a board, we're just trying to answer your question, okay?
Well, yeah, so I sat at home and I listened, and I was like, wow, we were all a part of a committee of numerous parents, teachers, administrators, board members, working on this together.
That work of that committee has nothing to do with the hire that was made for professional development services for our staff. As you know...
Oh, no, I get it, I was concerned with the answer that we, you guys gave to Mike, that we, you know, he said, have we ever tried to hire, or have we hired an equity coach? We tried to hire.
We didn't hire. Let me add.
I'm sorry?
We didn't hire an equity...
No, but we tried. We tried, we interviewed and tried.
I don't, I don't think we tried, I think your words are not proper in that situation. There was work of a committee being done, as committees do, they plan, they prepare, they debate, they discuss, and then ultimately, they present if there's a need to present. The very reason that that committee did not make a presentation to the board is exactly the proof that you need, that it wasn't tried, it was never presented, it was never brought forward. And I believe, as a result of some of the conversations that took place, when some of those people were part of that discussion, that's the very reason why it did not move forward. So I don't think it's fair to say out loud that the district tried, the district didn't try, the district was working as a committee, a committee made up of administrators, staff, parents, community members, and as a result of that work, a recommendation was not made. So...
Does it not concern you that the current consultant, Thomas Murray, is speaking, has a blog, and states that he's, he believes in education, and everything we do for the children and for staff all must begin with an equity lens?
The work that Thomas Murray did with both our administrators, and quite frankly, with the board and our teachers, was really development work, had nothing to do with equity. We could say as a board, the work that he did specifically with us at the board retreat that we had early in the summertime period, was really just about communication, board-to-board relationships, board-community relationships, had nothing to do with community, okay? And much of that work was throughout the same, through the various units that worked with them.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome. Any other questions in time? No? Then I am going to make a motion to adjourn to executive session, where the board is expected to discuss matters of personnel. It is not expected that the board will come out to take any further action before I ask for a second. I do want to certainly wish everyone a safe and enjoyable and much-needed vacation break, and I hope that all take a moment to just pause, celebrate your families, celebrate yourselves, and come back refreshed and ready to go. So with that, I'm going to ask for a second. Mr. Fallarino, discussion? Seeing and hearing, no discussion, call for the vote, all in favor? Five zero, have a good evening.